Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular board meeting of December the first. It's our inaugural meeting tonight. I'd like to welcome everyone here, and I'd also like, before we begin, to welcome Superintendent Anna Prokasin to the table. Welcome, Anna. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and just a reminder that this meeting will be video and audio recorded and will be posted later on the board's YouTube channel. I would ask student trustee Manuela Zapata to lead us in prayer. Manuela?
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Gracious God, in this season of Advent, we begin a new church year of faith and a new board year of service. You ask us both to wait and to act. Give us grace to be servant, good servant leaders, to listen and to respond with compassion. May our discussion and deliberations always have you and your people at their center. May our work be concerned with bringing out your kingdom in our schools, in our community, and in our world. In this jubilee year of mercy, may we come to know the meaning of your mercy that we, in turn, may moderate all that we do with the justice, serenity, and peace that come from you alone. Maranetha, come, Lord Jesus, amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Manuela. 1.2, motions adopted in camera; there are none. 1.3, information received in camera. Superintendent McMahon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this will be my brief stint as vice chair of the board to... So, under hiring, Alicia Fanton, sorry, hired as a probationary teacher effective November 16th, 2015. Lisa Pizimenti hired as a probationary teacher effective November 30th, 2015. Under retirements, Joanne Bertrand and Madalena Chocho effective December 31st, 2015, and Jay Spital effective June 30th, 2016. And under resignations, Mary Conti effective November 13th, 2015. And I apologize for any mispronunciations of the names contained therein, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent McMahon. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Trustee Quinn, trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay, seeing none, we move on to section four, the elections of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board for 2015 and 16. So, the first section that we will do, 4.1, is the election of the Chair of the Board for the period of...
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The two scrutineers have to be...
That's next. I'm just making an opening statement. The election of the Chair of the Board for the period of December 1st, 2015, to the first board meeting in December 2016. Should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, the nominees may appoint a scrutineer, and Superintendent McMahon and myself will be tabulating the ballots. According to our bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of Chair of the Board must be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. I will now ask for nominations to come forward. Trustee Marai?
Madam Director, I'd like to nominate Jane Michael for Chair.
May I have a seconder, please? Trustee Rowe?
I saw a move.
Does trustee Michael accept the nomination for the position of Chair of the Board?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations to come forward for Chair of the Board? Last time, third time, any more nominations to come forward? Trustee Trice? I nominate trustee Quinn for Chair of the Board, please. A seconder, please? Trustee Carabella? Trustee Quinn, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. Any further nominations? I'm going to say it three times. Any further nominations for Chair of the Board? And lastly, Chair of the Board nominations? Thank you. Seeing no further nominations, may I request a mover and a seconder to close the nominations for the position of Chair of the Board? Trustee Quinn, trustee Aunt Tomasi, all in favor? Thank you. So now it is the time where I would like to give each nominee for Chair an opportunity, if they wish, to say a few words and allow trustees to ask any questions of the candidate prior to the vote. I will begin with trustee Michael.
Thank you, Madam Director. Thank you to Paul Marai, and thank you to Mark Rowe for nominating and seconding. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve as Chair of the best board in the province. The position, as I've discovered, is a huge responsibility, very time-consuming, and I do want to thank my family, one and only family member here, for working together with me to allow time to attend all the duties and tend to all the responsibilities. We have achieved great things in this past year, just a couple of them. We opened two new schools, St. Bernadette and Queen of Heaven. We began the renewed value statement for the school district, which formed the basis of our multi-year strategic plan. We began the development of the next multi-year strategic plan. We celebrated 50 years of achievement at St. Michael Catholic Elementary School, which opened its doors in 1964. A new apprenticeship, scholarship program for Halton Catholic. Students interested in pursuing a career in electrical trades was announced, and the Halton Catholic Board was rated in the top 10 of Ontario's top energy-performing school boards. Excuse me. I've taken the opportunity to visit a lot, by no means all, schools this past year, and it's given me a most important overview of the physical plant itself and a chance to meet with the staff and the students at work. The board's role is governance, and it is governance set out by the Ontario Government and the Minister of Education. It's quite clear what trustees and boards can and cannot do. We have a responsibility to work with the Director to ensure that the board as a whole, not just the nine around the table, but the board as a whole, is moving forward for the good of every student. Each child is unique, and all learn in their own way. For the future, we have an ongoing process for the new strategic plan. We have taken care to involve the whole community, staff, parents and guardians, grandparents, the deanery, community members such as CWL, Knights, parish members. In this plan, we will also need to look at succession plans for the Director. I've learned a lot, and with your support, together we can continue to grow as a board for the good of all the children and the staff that make it happen. Thank you very much.
Any questions for trustee Michael? Seeing none, I would now offer the opportunity to trustee Quinn to say a few words, if you wish, and trustees may ask questions afterwards, if they wish.
Thank you, Director Dawson. I would just concur with everything that trustee Chair Michael said. We have had a terrific year at the board, and it's been a pleasure for me to serve in my first year as trustee for Oakville at Large. And my intention for running here is to ensure that we do continue to understand that we are equal as trustees, elected trustees, and that I really want the process of an elected Chair to be an annual event and not have someone to claim this chair. So that is my interest in holding this vote and seeing if each trustee, under secret ballot, is happy with the current Chair. Thank you.
Any questions for trustee Quinn? Okay, seeing none, we will now proceed by secret ballot on the resolution for the appointment to the position of Chair of the Board. Trustee Michael, would you wish to appoint a scrutineer?
I have you and Paul, no?
You can appoint another trustee, if you wish, and trustee, Superintendent McMahon and I will be counting the votes, and you could have a scrutineer that watched us.
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. Trustee Quinn, would you like a scrutineer?
Please, I'd like to appoint Jackson Brown, if he'd accept.
Trustee Brown, will you accept? All right, thank you. Trustee Michael is declared Chair of the Board for the period of December 1st, 2015, to the first board meeting in 2016. All in favor of the motion to nominate trustee Michael for the position of Chair of the Board? Thank you. Madam Chair, do you wish to address the meeting?
I sure do.
Okay.
I can recall a lot of decisions made, some easier than others, boundary reviews, school additions, new schools, school year calendars, walking distances, bell times, new staff. In preparing for this election, I realized that the reason I ran in the first place for trustees still applies. I never ran because I had a particular agenda or because I felt I needed to change anything. I thought of the reasons I got involved in schools in the first place, believing that I needed to be in my children's schools, having a voice, watching the principal and vice principal. I valued then and continue to value Catholic education. I try not to take things for granted, and I know that the fight for continued Catholic education in Ontario is not over. The threat of losing Catholic education, we all know, still exists. I wanted my children to attend Catholic schools, and I now want my grandchildren to have the privilege to experience the value of a Catholic education. I thank you for your trust in re-electing me as Chair and for your commitment to Catholic education, our system, our staff, and our students. We welcome new ideas and voices to the table while recognizing we are not starting from scratch because we do follow a long history of past trustees. We will all be tasked with many decisions this year. Some will be based on work that we need to bring to the table, some will be from the ministry, and some from system, staff, and student needs. It would be great if we could always agree, but we know that's not realistic, and there will be times when we will not always see things the same way. May our discussions be rich, may we always consider what is best for our students, and may we be respectful of our final decisions. May we always be able to call out the elephant in the room and recognize that in doing so and expressing questions and concern is not expressing lack of trust in fellow trustees and/or staff. There will be times, always, that we will need necessary clarification and information from fellow trustees and from staff that will help us make the best possible decisions. We will continue on our path of fiscal responsibility, balanced budgets, focus on student achievement, and school improvement projects. Our children are our future, and every decision we make as a board will hold that principle at the very core. May God bless us all. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Michael. I would now ask for a motion to destroy the ballots, please. Trustee Quinn, trustee Trice, all in favor? Thank you. And now we will move to proceed with the election of the Vice Chair of the Board for the period of December 1st, 2015, to the first board meeting in December 2016. And should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, the nominees may appoint a scrutineer, and Superintendent McMahon and myself will also be tabulating the ballots. According to our bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of Vice Chair of the Board must be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. I will now ask for nominations to come forward, please. Trustee Rowe?
I would like to nominate Arden Intomasi as Vice Chair.
May I have a seconder, please? Trustee Rubenda? Trustee Aunt Tomasi, would you accept the nomination? Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair of the Board? Trustee Dankel?
I would like to nominate trustee Quinn.
Thank you. May I have a seconder, please? Trustee Carabella? Trustee Quinn, do you accept the nomination for Vice Chair? Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Any other nominations for Vice Chair? And lastly, any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing no further nominations, may I request a mover and a seconder to close the nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Trustee Marai? Trustee Trice? All in favor? Thank you. I would now like to give each nominee for Vice Chair an opportunity, if they wish, to say a few words, and trustees may ask questions afterwards. Trustee Aunt Tomasi?
Thank you, Madam Director. I'd like to thank Mark and Diane for the nomination. I think Jane very nicely covered off a lot of what we dealt with in the last year or so. I'm always thankful and appreciative of being Vice Chair and for the support that everyone has demonstrated in my abilities. I think we're all devoted as trustees. I mean, luckily, some of us are blessed with a little more flexible time to do and assume some of those added roles. Over the last year, Jane and I have been able to attend to the responsibilities to ensure we remain visible to our stakeholders and staff and keep us on track to move the board in a forward direction. I've also been fortunate to be an OCSTA Director with your support, which is definitely a privilege. The beauty of that is combined, I get a micro vision and a macro vision of what's going on in the province. So, when I come to the board, I know I have a much richer appreciation of what's going on and how our perspective of Catholic education really needs to be unified. And certainly, a positive attitude towards staff and students can make all the difference in moving along. So I just humbly ask for your support again to continue on as a Chair's replacement. Jane's always around, but in the odd instance, I get to show up. And I'd like to move along with the many initiatives of the board with a specific focus on the overall benefit of the education of our students. I promise to continue to work as hard as I can towards the continuance of quality education for our Catholic students. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Aunt Tomasi. Trustee Quinn, would you like to address the board, please?
Thank you. Congratulations to trustee Michael in being the Chair again, and I would look forward to working with her as one of the newly-liked trustees around this table in the role of Vice Chair. I think that my experience here over the last year has shown me that while there was a steep learning curve, that there's a sense that I have that the newer trustees haven't been included in the formation of the agenda of the board. So I would like to bring a voice for the new trustees to the agenda table, as well as representing someone from outside of Burlington in the role of Chair and Vice Chair. So, as both the current and former Chair and Vice Chair were from Burlington, I think a voice from another community would be beneficial to the setting of the agenda. Thank you. I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions for trustee Quinn? Trustee Michael?
More of a comment than a question. Trustee Quinn, I think the clock has struck, and you're no longer a new trustee. You're just one of us. One year.
Well, I can respond to that comment then, since it's being put on the table. When I was elected, one of the reasons that I did run for election was the fact that trustees had been in the position for 20-plus years, and I thought that change was as important as anything in moving the board forward, so that's why I put my name on the ballot. And so, to answer that, one year I have been on it, and I do feel I am one of the trustees, but still not completely united and connected to the board as the person at the end of the table. So I would relish the opportunity to have a key to the other side of the building and see what goes on, how the agendas are made, and find out what's going on in the Director's office. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Quinn. We will now proceed to secret ballot on the resolution for the appointment to the position of Vice Chair of the Board. Okay. Trustee Quinn, would you like to appoint a scrutineer?
I'd like to appoint Manuela Zapata, please.
Thank you. period of December 1st, 2015, to the first board meeting in December 2016. All in favor of the motion to nominate trustee Aunt Tomasi to the position of Vice Chair of the Board? Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, would you wish to address the meeting?
Yes, thank you. I thank you again to Mark and Jane for the nomination and to all the trustees for their continued support. It's both a pleasure and an honor to serve all the stakeholders of this tremendous board, regardless of the capacity. As one of the more longstanding current trustees, I defer to trustee Dankel. He's got me beat by one year. I feel additional responsibility to maintain an open and receptive attitude to my fellow trustees and to work to ensure our board continues as a leader in the province. As always, I will do my best to support the Chair in her role and use discernment and prayer in making decisions to benefit both the board and the ratepayers who have given us their confidence. I look forward to working together with each one of you and our senior staff in a spirit of shared vision. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Aunt Tomasi. May I have a motion to destroy the ballots, please? Trustee Rowe, trustee Carabella, all in favor? Thank you. And I'd be happy to hand the meeting over to our new Chair, trustee Michael.
Okay, so we're at presentations, and we have none. We have no delegations. The minutes of the November 17th regular board meeting are attached, and I have a mover to approve those minutes. Trustee Marai, seconded by trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. Minutes of November 24th, special board meeting attached. May I have a mover to approve those minutes? Trustee Antomasi, seconded by trustee Rubenda, all in favor? Thank you. The summary of outstanding items, 8.1, attached for your information. There are no action items. There are no staff reports. Information item, 11.1, student trustee's update, please.
Good evening, everyone. So, just starting off with the general student trustee update. So like I mentioned last meeting, we are working on our Black History Month, and we've had the tentative agenda for that day planned. We have it booked. It is February 23rd at Bishop Reading. So now we're just kind of working on getting speakers and getting workshops and really making the student senators have a more hands-on approach this year compared to last year. And then just changing it up for a bit, just because when we do our general student trustee updates, we always kind of report on what's happening in the board. So I kind of wanted to give you guys a little more information on what's happening in OSAECA, which is the General Association, and what we're kind of doing, just so that you see, just to give you an understanding of kind of what happens in our association and kind of what we do. So, in terms of that, this past Saturday, we had our executive meeting in Toronto at Ryerson. So we started planning our conference in Ottawa, which is the Board Council Conferences. So that happens usually one weekend in February. I believe this year is the 16th to the 18th. So that was kind of just hashing out the agenda, speaking about possible, generating possible speakers. We're trying to get Justin Trudeau, so if you guys have any insiders on where he might be, or like his email or his text messages or something, I'd be glad to have those. And then kind of just doing that. And then also, we are doing, once again, a lot of ministry consultations, meeting a lot of people in the ministry, just to kind of give our voice and, once again, represent that student voice. And we're also doing outreach to a lot of provinces.
So just starting off with the general student trustee update. So like I mentioned last meeting, we are working on our Black History Month, and we've had the tentative agenda for that day planned. We have it booked. It is February 23rd at Bishop Reading. So now we're just kind of working on getting speakers and getting workshops, and really making the student senators have a more hands-on approach this year compared to last year. And then just changing it up for a bit, just because when we do our general student trustee updates, we always kind of report on what's happening in the Board. So I kind of wanted to give you guys a little more information on what's happening in OSACA, which is the General Association, and what we're kind of doing, just so that you see, just to give you an understanding of kind of what happens in that, in our association, and kind of what we do. So in terms of that, this past Saturday, we had our executive meeting in Toronto at Ryerson. So we started planning our conference in Ottawa, which is the Board Council Conferences. So that happens usually one weekend in February. I believe this year it is the 16th to the 18th. So that was kind of just hashing out the agenda, speaking about possible, generating possible speakers. We're trying to get Justin Trudeau, so if you guys have any insiders on where he might be, or like his email, or his text messages, or something, I'd be glad to have those. And then kind of just doing that. And then also, we are doing, once again, a lot of ministry consultations, meeting a lot of people in the ministry, just to kind of give our voice, and once again, represent that student voice. And we're also doing outreach to a lot of provinces, specifically Alberta and Vancouver, and kind of talking to the student trustees and getting the ball rolling, to kind of have more student trustees. The goal is to get student trustees in all 13 provinces and their territories, but I don't know how long that's going to take. So that's kind of what's happening in the realm of OSA and for student trustee, and for our general update. And then moving on to our pillar reports, I am doing Belonging this meeting. So BR just finished their shirt drive, so once again, collecting shirts from all students in our school, and kind of those will be used to donate to, donate back to homeless shelters, and people who don't unfortunately have access to what we have, and don't have what we take for granted. And we know that with winter coming, it's a big issue, especially the homeless community with them not having the adequate housing that we do. And then Purpose Christie was selling anti-bullying shirts, so we were able to buy that, and then proceeds would go to anti-bullying causes. And then a lot of high schools, their past, this past, the past two weeks, and then coming up this week, had their semi-formal dances, so it gave an opportunity for students to kind of dress up, look good, and have fun at the school dance. They left room for Jesus, just let you guys know. And then BR launched their recycling campaign, so once again, getting students to recycle, recycle, reduce, and reuse, and kind of having inner-school contests, and giving out prizes. And then finally, at St. Thomas Aquinas, they had their Dare Day, so students would go around daring each other, and that was to raise awareness for AIDS and HIV, which is actually the Global Awareness Day for AIDS and HIV. I don't know if you guys have Snapchat, but there's a filter for that today. So once again, raising awareness for that. So under the pillar of Belonging, that is it, and I will pass it on to Madola.
So tonight, I have the pillar of Achieving. This past week, Holy Trinity hosted the Team Unbreakable's Bold and Cold Run Event for students. Schools have been promoting more achievements, and recognizing more of the achievements based on skills such as computer technology, and like computer design and stuff like that, rather than just sports and academics, so to spread the achieving all over the school. And Bishop Reading's DECA team placed first at regional competition. So that's pretty cool.
All right. Tonight, I have the pillar of Believing. So for Bishop Reading, students received awards for exemplifying focus on faith themes. I think that's pretty cool. I've never heard of that outside of Chloe's school. And schools are going to be starting their Advent Masses and Liturgies in the next couple weeks before Christmas. Yay. I'm excited for Christmas. And schools are running their Christmas initiatives. Like, for example, at my school, we're doing the Angel Tree, where a class will sponsor a family, and buy a, purchase a gift for a family member in need. So I think that's a great initiative that I like to participate in every year, and other schools are going to be doing their thing, too. That's all.
Thank you. School Educational Field Trip, Superintendent Nar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The trips are before you, with the future destinations for some of our schools. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may ask.
Do the trips to OSA, with the prices there, are those covered by the school-generated funds, or are the students required to pay those out of their own pocket?
So it's up to the school to determine. They may do some fundraising around that, but students would probably kick in as well.
Seeing no other questions, 11.3 Audit Committee Annual Report, Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You'll find on page 26, the annual report for our Audit Committee, as of 2015, in August 31st, which is being forwarded to the Ministry of Education, according to their guidelines.
Any questions, the Trustee Rowe? Seeing none. 11.4, 2016-17 GSN, I'm sorry. Trustee Danko? I didn't see your hand.
Madam Chair, I don't see the report in my package. I see a template to create a report, but I don't see the actual report.
On the computer, it's page 28.
Madam Chair, can the Treasurer provide a copy of the report, as opposed to just the confirmation that a report was done?
Through you, Madam Chair. And Trustee Rowe may wish to comment. This is the report, it's on page 26 of your Agenda, in accordance with the new SB memorandum, SB 30 that's come out. That is the report that the Ministry has asked, pardon me, that be forwarded to them.
Okay.
Oh, I don't see the report, Madam Chair, so I just see a confirmation that a report was done.
The report is signed with my signature. That's it. That's the annual report, sent to the Ministry of Education.
Just one page.
It's just one page long.
Okay, I think I'm going to leave this, we can come back to it, if you'd like. Miscellaneous information, none. Correspondence, none. Open question period. No questions? Oh, my goodness. What did I miss? 04, 2016, GSN, Ministry Consultation, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did mention this consultation process at an earlier Board meeting, so since there was such a light Agenda tonight, I just thought I would see if I could add to some of the weight of it. So at last Board meeting, we, the Board approved the audited financial statements for the 14-15 year. We, this report jumps ahead two years, past the 15-16 year that we're in, and goes to the 16-17 fiscal year, as the Ministry has started consultation with school boards in each of the regions, and I believe there's eight regions in the province, on the Grant for Student Needs, which will come out, traditionally comes out at the end of March, it'll be March 2016. You will see from the, included in the package is a consultation guide, as well as specifics on four areas. Our Board participated in the Toronto Area and Region Office, Toronto Area Region Office consultations, which were on October 30th at Dufferin Peel Catholic District School Board, and representing us were Superintendent McGillicuddy, Superintendent Porcassen, even though she wasn't officially in the role, she was there, to her credit, and the Director, myself, and Superintendent Brown, covering off each of the four areas that are mentioned in the report. The day, I think you can ask the other superintendents and the Director, I believe, was a fruitful one. We had general conversations at one of the, at the opening session, and then where there was breakout sessions on each of the four topics that the Ministry has chosen to key on this year, which are Special Education, FNMI, Language, the Language Grant, and Students at Risk. There were, there was an open session where we could bring up other items, and certain other items were brought up, including, I think someone brought up funding of construction for Board offices, and stuff like, things like that. So I don't know who that was, but anyway, there, so we tried to bring up other areas of concern. It is, it is, those, the Ministry picked on those four areas, sorry, brought forward those four areas as points of discussion. They have started their process, they're open to input and feedback on the grants, as individuals, boards, or associations may see fit, and they have taken this consultation process across, across the province. So we are, in the, at the next Board meeting, we will bring forward the 2015-16 Revised Budget. So with the 2014-15 year-end, and the 16-17 Revised Budget, along with these, the consultation process from the Ministry for 16-17, those three documents, if you will, will inform the budget process for 16-17, which we hope to bring the initial kickoff report, if you will, to the Board at the second Board meeting in January. And senior staff are going to set aside some time before, at a Admin Council meeting, before the Christmas break, to address areas of potential reduction in reference to Trustee Marai's motion from a previous Board meeting. So myself, the Director, senior staff, Roxanna, would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you to the Director. What were the priorities that our representatives to the consultation process brought to the Ministry? What, I see the consultation document, but what were the priorities that our Board presented?
Madam Chair, I can start, if I may, through you to Trustee Quinn. This consultation was more the Ministry directing us to, pardon me, to comment on the four areas that I mentioned. There'll be ample opportunity after that to do that, so we haven't, they have, they didn't really ask, they asked for our input on those particular items, and they did go over in the general section, sort of an overview of things that have happened recently, including the updates on the school closure consolidation guidelines, and the community partnership guidelines, too. So they gave a general overview in the morning. It was structured by them, and they had the Agenda, if you will, which we've included as Appendix B in the report, but there'll be ample opportunity for us to respond as a Board, or as through various associations that we're all part of as trustees and staff. So I hope, and sorry.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. When we broke into the different areas, we got to listen to other, we were asked, you know, what are some challenges, what are some opportunities that you've had, and do we have any input for the Ministry during this consultation? So we got to hear the challenges and opportunities that other Boards were facing. It wasn't us coming with, what's, you know, what are we going to do, what have we identified? It was more them gathering information from Boards, as to what has transpired over the past, and could we make suggestions for how they fund us moving forward?
Trustee Rowe?
So is the gist of this consultation for them to find savings?
Through you, Madam Chair, Trustee Rowe, it is certainly in the background, if not the forefront. It's called SPAM, the School Board Efficiency and Modernization, I believe, is the acronym. It started, this is the third year they've done this consultation. Typically, they did it in the new year, in the February, March time, January, February, March timeframe. It was usually in the form of briefs written by OCSTA, as an example, or OASBO, or whoever decided to. So they've decided to adopt this process early on, and so it really is in an effort. The goal of the Province is still to balance the budget by 17-18, and given that the Ministry of Education and the Ministry of Health are, I believe, the two largest-ticket ministries, if you will, certainly the cost reductions are in the foreground.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. We have no absenteeism, we don't have to go back in camera. Director Dawson would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to just inform everybody that last evening, the Friends of Simon Wiesenthal Center for Holocaust Studies presented Trustee Helena Carabella with the Award for Excellence in Holocaust Education, and we understand that Trustee Quinn was also a recipient of the same award, and although he's not able to attend the ceremony, it will be presented to him at a later time. And we are going to be posting a story on our website this week, so please join me in congratulating Helena and Anthony on this prestigious award. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's great. Motion to adjourn, please? Trustee Quinn, seconded by Trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. And Trustee Quinn, closing prayer, please.
Thank you. I'd like to read the Jubilee of Mercy prayer that our Holy Father has recently issued. The Jubilee of Mercy begins on December 8th, so please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord Jesus Christ, you have taught us to be merciful like the Heavenly Father, and have told us that whoever sees you, sees him. Show us your face, and we will be saved. Your loving gaze freed Zekias and Matthew from being enslaved by money, the adulteress and Magdalene from seeking happiness only in created things, made Peter weep after his betrayal, and assured paradise to the repentant thief. Let us hear, as if addressed to each one of us, the words that you spoke to the Samaritan woman, if you knew the gift of God. You are the, you are the visible face of the invisible Father, of the God who manifests his power above all by forgiveness and mercy. Let the Church be your visible face in the world. The Lord is risen and glorified. You willed that your ministers would also be closed in weakness, in order that they may feel compassion for those in ignorance and error. Let everyone who approaches them feel sought after, loved, and forgiven by God. Send your Spirit and consecrate every one of us with this anointing, so that the Jubilee of Mercy may be a year of grace from the Lord, and your Church, with renewed enthusiasm, may bring good news to the poor, proclaim liberty to captives and the oppressed, and restore sight to the blind. We ask this of you, Lord Jesus Christ, through the intercession of Mary, Mother of Mercy, who you live and reign with, the Father, and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen. Father, and Son, Holy Spirit, amen.